Okay, have you started recording?
Yes, sir.
All right, I am calling to order this meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board on Monday, July 27, 2020 at 6:33 PM. We're holding this meeting remotely via Microsoft Teams. Tim, I will ask you to review, as you do each of these meetings, the procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin with the Planning Department. David Brooks, the Planning Director, is here as well. Just have a few remarks to make. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and pursuant to Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12 issued on March 23, 2020, in accordance with the executive order 2020-04, the Lebanon Planning Board is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with emergency order number 12, the City of Lebanon has taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, to provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and to provide a mechanism for the public to alert the Planning Board during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. All members of the Planning Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and clicking on the link for the July 27, 2020 Planning Board meeting. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who's participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. In order to ensure the best possible transmission of the meeting content, it is suggested that you disable the camera on your chosen device to reduce the video feed and increase the available bandwidth for all attendees. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, microphones will be muted by staff until you have a question or comment. For people using the Microsoft Teams platform, you can unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that appears on the Teams platform if you hover your cursor on the middle lower half of the screen. For people calling in by phone, please press *6 to unmute yourself. *6. If anyone has difficulty with access during the course of the meeting, please email us at planning@lebanonnh.gov, or you can use the chat function on Microsoft Teams to indicate the issue that you're having. If we can provide technical assistance, we will try to do so. If we are unable to do so, it is still worthwhile to be aware of the problems that participants may be encountering so that we can try and address those in future for future meetings. In the event that we experience widespread and severe technical difficulties such that we are unable to continue holding the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes that are taken during the meeting tonight shall be done by roll call vote. Again, we ask that you not use the chat function unless you need to communicate that you're experiencing technical difficulties. Finally, please note that this meeting is being recorded and it will be available on the city's website, lebanonnh.gov/AgendaCenter. And with that, I will turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you for that, Tim. I will now proceed with the roll call. I will do this, as I have in the past, by alphabetical order, first name. Please say whether you're present and whether you were alone. So I am obviously present and I am alone, Gregorio.
Present and alone.
Thank you. Jim? Joan Monroe?
Monroe is present and alone.
Laurel?
Laurel and Jim need to unmute.
Laurel is present and alone.
Counselor Winnie is also present and alone. I'm having a little computer slowness.
All right, thank you, Jim. Kathy?
Kathy is present and alone.
Matt?
Present and alone.
And Tom?
Tom is present and alone.
Excellent, we're all here. All right, our first order of business, to give me great pleasure to announce, if you haven't already heard, the arrival of Palmer Hall to the Hall family. I understand mother and baby are doing well and father is even getting some sleep, so congratulations to the Halls. Our second order of business is continued application, Novo Nordisk. Tim, I would ask you to give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following the hearing at the Planning Board's last meeting, we realized that this application, although it has submitted an application to the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for wetland impact approval, it also requires local approval in the form of a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment for the proposed wetland impact. So the applicant has gone ahead and submitted an application for those wetland impacts to the zoning board for a special exception approval under section 41.5 of the zoning ordinance, and that hearing will be held one week from tonight, Monday, August 3. We are going to ask the zoning board to consider making a decision the same evening. And so we hope that they will do so, but it is up to the zoning board as they have been proceeding in the same manner that the Planning Board has with respect to hearing and application on one evening and then postponing that hearing to the following meeting to wrap it up and to enter into deliberation. And so we think there's good reason for the zoning board to hear it in one evening, and we will provide that rationale to the zoning board on Monday, but it is up to them. But if all goes well, the applicant will have their wetland approval next Monday from the zoning board, and then they can proceed with their site plan application on August 10. So because there is a special exception that's required, we would ask that the Planning Board simply continue the site plan application for 5 and 9 Technology Drive to the August 10, 2020 Planning Board meeting to continue the hearing until that time.
I would just add to that, for the benefit of those members that missed the last meeting, we did have a presentation, we did have time for several questions, so we're already well along in the process. So may I have a motion from a member to continue this application to August 10?
So moved, this is Kathy.
Kathy, thank you very much. Second?
Matt, seconds.
Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? All right, I'm gonna jump in my list. I'm gonna start with Joan and do it off by the quarter. Joan, yea or nay?
Monroe says, says yea.
Laurel?
Laurel says yea.
Kathy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yea.
Tom?
Yes.
My vote, yes. Gregorio?
Yes.
And Jim?
Counselor Winnie votes aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous. We will see the Novo Nordisk people on August 10. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, this is David Brooks.
Yes.
Did you already appoint Gregorio for an open position?
Oh, I didn't.
Or did I miss that? I may have missed that.
No, I failed to do so. So now we'll appoint him. Absolutely. So Gregorio, you were appointed to vote for the vote you just did. Our next item is a study item, and Tim, I believe you are going to talk about some proposed amendments to zoning ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Tim Corwin. Just a quick background. As most of you know, the Planning Department amends the zoning ordinance on an annual basis. It is a living document, if you will, to some extent. There are always, almost always, changes to be made that reflect changes in the community, changes in the law, changes in priorities, changing in planning concepts, all sorts of things that drive changes in the master plan, all things that drive changes to the zoning ordinance. In addition, when crafting the zoning ordinance, it is almost impossible to think of every scenario that you'll be presented with, and so it's very common on a fairly regular basis where we're presented with scenarios that we hadn't thought of before and have, it's a little unclear how to apply the zoning awards to the situations. And so we always take the opportunity to, as we can, to try and clean up the zoning ordinance to make it as comprehensive as possible. So for a variety of reasons, the Planning Department engages on an annual review and update of the city's zoning ordinance. And what we do is, we try to work collaboratively as much as possible with the Planning Board in coming up with these proposed amendments that, again, are driven by a variety of factors. At the end of the day, the zoning ordinance is a policy document, and a set of regulations that is adopted by the city council. It's the city council that has the authority to adopt and amend the zoning ordinance, but it is the Planning Board's input into that process is very important, and that's why we almost always start with you to give you an idea of what we're thinking of for the following year, and also to solicit ideas from the board member. If there's something that you've come across in the past year or so in the zoning ordinance that you think we should take a look at or would like to amend, we're always, always open to Planning Board-driven amendments to the zoning ordinance as well as initiatives that the Planning Department generates. And that's true throughout the year. We're always open to suggestions, and we certainly keep a running tally of things to look at and to amend. And so by this year, I mean, 2020 to 2021, what usually happens is there are amendments, sorry, there are regulations within the zoning ordinance that are directly approvable by the city council, but there are certain amendments, as they relate to our residential districts, that also require voter approval, and that's done via the March ballot every year. And so, again, the summer before, we try to tee these amendments up with you to get your initial feedback, let you know what we're thinking, and ask for your input and ideas. Normal, and that's where we are tonight. Normally, we have a couple of big-ticket proposed zoning amendments which we focus our efforts on. This year is a little different. We're trying to devote a little bit more energy to looking at our site plan regulations and our subdivision regulations, and so, as you well know, and which we'll touch on in a little bit tonight. But so we're thinking that for the zoning amendments that would come before council, city council initially in October for what we call a kickoff, a kickoff of the zoning review, and then back to the Planning Board in November, back to the Conservation Commission for the review, to the zoning board of adjustment, and then back to council in January for a public hearing and adoption of whatever gets through that review process. We're thinking that the majority of those amendments are going to be rather small scale and scope. And so, again, instead of focusing on big-ticket items this year, what we want to do is just take the opportunity to do a sort of a wholesale cleanup of the zoning ordinance. There are lots of odds and ends that need to be cleaned up, and so, and that's what we're working on right now. And I don't know that there's anything necessarily worth focusing on with too much specificity at this time. What we'll plan to do is bring you a red line of the zoning ordinance with all the miscellaneous, again, sort of small-scale changes that we're going to propose to council and get your feedback on those. And probably at that time in September, there might be a few more that we'd want to specifically ask you about. But I just wanted to give you an idea of the direction that we're headed in for our zoning amendments for 2020, 2021. Having said that, there's one amendment in particular that we definitely wanted to get before you this evening to have you start thinking about it and get your feedback. And I'll go ahead. And then there's another amendment that I might touch on, but the one that we wanted to share with you tonight specifically is, I'll bear with you one second. There is currently, the building height limitation in the residential 1 zoning district is a maximum of 45 feet. And as you may recall, in the, just to use a recent example, the 401 Mount Support Road, Dartmouth College Michaels project, the applicant suggested that they would have considered and would have been open to building parking beneath the proposed buildings in that development, except that they were constrained by the 45-foot height limitation. And so, this has come up before, this has come up in other applications as well. What we're thinking of doing is providing that the Planning Board could authorize an increase in building height in the R1 district up to 55 feet if the purpose of increasing the building height for that proposed building is to accommodate structured parking within or beneath the building. And so, again, there's a targeted purpose for this, at least in terms of how we're conceiving it at the moment. And that would be to specifically allow and accommodate and make it more feasible to have parking within or underneath the building instead of perhaps encouraging it, forcing it, or encouraging it to be, you know, spread out, frankly, in the way that it is with the 401 Mount Support Road project, not to pick on that project, but it was, that's a more recent example, and it sort of highlights the concern that was raised by both the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, the concern that we think could be addressed to some extent with giving the Planning Board the ability to increase the maximum permitted height of the building, again, if it was for the purpose of providing parking within the building. Note that the Planning Board would have to, it would have to be clear that that was the purpose of increasing the height, and then that proposal is still subject to the rather lengthy requirements of section 302.4, which are the enhanced performance standards for conditional use permit applications. If there is, we're very interested in getting at least your initial feedback on this idea, recognizing that this is the first time you've heard it or seen it. And then just keep in mind that, again, this is something that would require voter approval. So if this concept or something along these lines is proposed as an amendment to the R1 district, then it would go to the council in January of 2021. It should go to council in January 2021 for a public hearing, and at that, based on the outcome of the public hearing, the council could choose to forward this to the ballot or not, or place this on the ballot or not. But if they did place this or something like this on the ballot, it would require voter approval. And just quickly, I will share the zoning map with you so that we can be clear as to what is the R1 district.
Chair, may I ask a question before we go to that map?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to keep questions very limited, correct? Tim, this is now really an open discussion because we're gonna run out of time.
I mean, I think if we are looking for a little bit of quick feedback.
Yeah, I understand.
Can we show the map while the question's being asked?
Yeah.
The R1 district are the areas in yellow, so along Mount Support Road, along the west side of Route 120, and then down at exit 19, north of exit 19, along Moscoma Road and Pine Tree Cemetery Road.
Joan, your question?
Well, it's just, well, we were told when they were doing it that they couldn't go down because of the high water table, so.
Yeah, I agree. I'm not sure that that's the best example. I will focus on the idea itself rather than Dartmouth and where the reasons they gave.
Well, you can go down. There's nothing to prevent that now. I mean, just from a zoning standpoint, there's nothing to prevent that now as long as the building height itself is no greater than 45 feet. But I think it was suggested they would have considered having parking underneath the building, not necessarily digging into the ground, but basically having the first story of the building as parking instead of.
And then the second story would be the residential.
Right, right.
So, Tim, and this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
So, Mr. Chair, the concern I would have, we've had a couple of things have been brought before the board regarding height and the height that is allowed for structures, and this increases the height in one area by another story, which is going to, again, create those issues that, unfortunately, if the regulation exists, then somebody can go ahead and use it, and then that preempts others from being able to show that there are some issues that would drive reasons why it shouldn't be done. So I'm not opposed to it. I like the idea of getting less asphalt, more parking under structures. I think that's a great idea. I am concerned about increasing the heights of structures. Tim, what would happen if somebody wanted three stories of parking instead of one story? Would we allow that?
Well, it depends. First of all, the parking has to serve the needs of that site. So if a three-story parking garage was proposed, and again, it was to serve the needs of that use, then I think that would be permitted. We would encourage that. In fact, the only limitation, if any, would be the maximum building, sorry, the maximum parking limitation, but I think we exclude parking structures from that because we're trying to encourage parking structures. Just bear with me for one second.
I think you're doing that, let me just, again, this is, again, a fictitious idea, but I'm assuming that each parking garage, ceiling to floor, or floor to ceiling would be about 12 feet. So that would add another 36 feet of building to one that was limited to be 45 feet high. Seems like, again, I'm not opposed to the idea of parking and parking under buildings. I am concerned about that it would have to be done in such a way that it wouldn't be an extremely, the unforeseeable consequences of having too much height added on to a structure because the regulation's going to allow for that type of thing. That's my concern.
Yeah, just, Tom, yeah, sorry, just to respond to Tom's comment, the proposed, the existing height requirement and this concept regulation does regulate the maximum height of the building. So if somebody wanted to have three levels of parking, they would only get one level of apartments on top of that, or perhaps two, up to the 55 feet. It's not an unlimited height increase based on the amount of parking somebody wants to put under the building or is willing to put under the building. It would be a limited increase of up to 10 feet, and it would be based on the requirements of the conditional use permit, which are outlined in the zoning ordinance, which are very similar to the special exception criteria. They're actually somewhat more strict than the special exception criteria, not quite as strict as a variance.
Yeah, it's, not that you were saying this is what it is, Tom, but just to be clear, it would be 55 feet, up to 55 feet total. So it's not, you know, two levels of parking, and then on top of that, a 55-story building. It's just a way to help realize the potential for parking, structured parking beneath a building, based on projects that we've seen come before us and different proposals at a staff level.
Laurel, I hear your voice.
Yes, yes, I have a question.
Yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I seem to recall that the conversation about increasing the height that buildings were allowed to be pertained to the downtown district and was a follow-on to a discussion of the master plan. And during that discussion, the question of West Lebanon came up. And since West Lebanon has not had any visioning process akin to the visioning process that downtown Lebanon has had, the board made a decision, back when this was first discussed, that this would not hold true, that the increase in maximum height would not hold true in West Lebanon, but only in Lebanon proper. I see that parts of the R1 district are, in fact, in West Lebanon. So how do we square that circle?
Well, I think.
Which part of the R1 district are you referring to?
Old Pine Tree Cemetery Road.
Laurel, this is Tim. I think the issue there is that we had, before the Lebanon Downtown District was adopted, the Central Business District Regulations, which in the CBD encompasses downtown West Lebanon, and it used to encompass downtown Lebanon, the maximum height, I can't remember exactly, two or three years ago, was 45 feet. The amendment was to allow building height to be 55 feet, but only essentially in downtown Lebanon.
Right.
So the building CBD in West Lebanon is still subject to a 45 maximum building height limitation. And so, we're not talking about the central businesses, or tonight, we're just talking about the R1 district. And in the R1 district, we, again, we're proposing the possibility to increase from the maximum 45 currently up to 55 feet with a conditional use permit if it's to accommodate structured parking.
Mr. Chair?
Hang on a second. So Laurel, the one was for the CBD, and we agreed that the equivalent CBD in West Lebanon would not change until there was a visioning study, but that was only that portion of West Lebanon. Anyway, Matt?
Thank you. Tim, Matt Hall here. So I think that this makes sense to me. I don't have any problem with it. The only thing that kind of makes me think about is, are there other circumstances where it would make sense to have, like, you know, basically to allow a developer to go higher than 45 to 55, let's say, because maybe they're doing, you know, something else? Maybe they're giving a heck of a lot of recreational area, or they're, I guess I'm saying is, do we maybe, is it worth thinking about if there's other things that are worth thinking about beyond parking?
So we're giving out, that sounds like giving out favors to me.
Well, no, I guess all I'm saying is, if we're thinking of that, the Planning Board could approve a project to go higher because they are going to do more parking, which would, I think, you know, get rid of more pavement and stuff like that, possibly. Are there other things that we would like to see in Lebanon that maybe could be, if you do this, then maybe you can build higher if you want to?
Sounds like a favor to me.
Just to be clear, we're not talking about a change in the allowed density or the number of units that could be created. It is, again, just how they are created. The concept here is, in part, at least, to address some of the comments and concerns that have come up recently from both Planning Board and Conservation Commission about the extent of impervious coverage for projects, without naming any specific projects in particular. We're not changing the number of units, so it's not a favor in that sense. To the extent it is a favor, it's not much different than what was incorporated into the Lebanon Downtown District, where, again, there is a component that allows the Planning Board, by conditional use, to approve a higher height for a project that is meeting some other city slash community goal by, through a variety of mechanisms, whether it's implementing a certain portion of the master plan, whether it is providing some public open space along the river frontage, whether it is addressing or providing, say, public access to a rail trail or some sort of connectivity or something like that. There are options built into the LD district. I think what Matt is suggesting is not, doesn't sound too different from that, but in no case ever in this, you know, are we talking about you can have extra units than you would be able to have. you would be able to have, uh, under the current R1 district.
Chair, this is Kathy.
Yes, Kathy.
I have two concerns about this. One is where this request is in the R1 district. The project that was mentioned earlier by Tim, the Dartmouth Project, where there's really nothing behind it but wooded hillside, that extra 10 feet doesn't really, um, impact negatively on a neighbor close behind. And if it got 30 or 40 or 50 parking spots underneath a building so that you didn't have that large extent of impervious coverage, that might be worth considering as a trade-off. In other words, a reduction in the amount of impervious coverage that was allowed in, as a trade-off for the increased height that was permitted. Not that you could still put as much asphalt down, you know, with a tennis court or with something else, if you just put parking underneath. So I would think it would, it would have to be a trade-off. And then secondly, where I said location, again, in the R1 residential district, not everything has 50 acres of wooded hillside behind it. And we've seen other proposals in Lebanon where the closeness to the neighborhood behind, which is nowhere near 55 feet or 45 feet high even, the, the tall buildings like that have a really negative impact on that neighborhood, especially when there isn't an increase in the setbacks. So I, I still think I would see it more as a, a trade-off. You'd have to get something for giving something.
I, I think I need to close this one down because we're already past seven o'clock. We've got 20 minutes left. I hope you got some good feedback, David and Tim. Uh, when we would be likely see this again?
Probably September, but.
Okay, okay, so that gives us some time to think about it. All right, so let's move along to committee reports. And the first thing I can do is hopefully find someone who is interested in joining the CIP Committee. This is only meet three times, it's three times in next month and a half, correct, David?
That's correct. Don't everybody jump at once.
And, and, and it is fascinating because it really gets you into the city budget. All right, I don't hear any volunteers. That's disappointing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Matt. David, uh, how long are the meetings?
Uh, as you remember from last year, they're two and a half hours or so. We're getting very close. We expect to, I was working on the CIP on Friday and again today. Uh, I think there are going to be more projects to be reviewed this year, uh, but we're going to try to, to streamline that review process further. So again, I, I, I'm hopeful that we could get through, um, in two meetings. It might go to a third, but we would happily provide you dinner.
Digitally.
Oh, that's true. I forgot about that. Okay, forget the dinner. Well, you get a rain check on the dinner.
Well, Mr. Chair, um, I'll tell you what, if no one else comes forward, give me 24 hours to think about it.
All right, all right. Well, others, please think about it. Committee reports, I'm going to jump in just because I distributed something in regard to the Connecticut River. Uh, just tell you that I thought that this was of general interest. This was done by the Commissioners, the Upper Valley Subcommittee just reviewed it. The thrust of it is that the budgets, both from Vermont and New Hampshire, have dwindled in the last, I guess, two years. And so Commissioners were putting together a five-year plan in the hopes of promoting more interest, broadening the number of people that are, uh, willing to join in the good works that, um, the Commission does. So I just, uh, submit it for your consideration. Please feel free to pass it on to anyone, uh, you think might be interested in, um, what the Connecticut River, uh, Commissioners do for, uh, for us in general. Any other committee reports?
Chair?
Yes.
Row here.
Yes.
I read through the whole thing for the, um, the Upper Valley, um, the River Committee, CRJC, and I, I thought it was really good and especially the note about, um, the expectation that there'll be some migration of people away from the cities, uh, partly because of the COVID pan- pandemic. I thought that was, I'm really glad to see that, that, that there is an organization that's aware of that and publicly stating it. So it is part of the educational process. I, I think a lot of people have not made the connection yet. I can, um, I can report on the, um, I can report on the Class 6 and the Energy Committees. The Class 6 is about to have its first meeting, so we'll find out what's happening that and report in a month. And the Energy Advisory Committee, I didn't report last month, they are busy on so many things. It's, it's really awesome how much they get done. And they're working on, they're still working on the, the city's, um, street lighting and, you know, getting the lights taken down and there's, there's, there's a lot of, um, of, red tape involved with that. Um, they're working on, on the landfill, at the, uh, the landfill gas and it's, it's a multi, multi complicated process. Um, and so it's, it's not as simple as one might think that it is. Um, and so there's a lot of stuff that they're working on with that. And they are working on community power, um, working on, uh, situations where people who have solar, um, can feed back into the, uh, you know, into the energy sources and get their bills reduced or whatever. It's, it's, this stuff has to go through so many red, so much red tape with, between the PUC and the, and the different electrical companies, National Grid and Liberty Utilities. I mean, it's incredible that, but, but they're, they're working on it and they make progress all the time and it's just, it's, it's very impressive. So I just wanted to put that out there, what good work they're doing.
Thank you. Other committees, reports?
Mr. Chair, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom.
I, I attended my first pedestrian and bicycling, uh, committee meeting and I am getting my feet on the ground with that one. Uh, there was a lot of discussion particularly around bicycling. And in fact, I guess, uh, and maybe David, you or Tim know something about this, but a child, I guess, on a bicycle was hit sometime over the summer. And so there were some discussions about the safety of bicycles on the roads and who feels safe on what type of roads and what type of berms and what type of, uh, facilities are, you know, capable of being able to hold bicycles and keep them, them safe. And so anyway, it was a lot of discussion. I thought that was really good, but it seemed to be much more centered on bicycles than it really was on pedestrians. So I have a feeling many of the, uh, co-members of that committee are probably bicyclists and, and less walkers. But at any rate, I, you know, one of the things that, that was just of interest, it talked about the fact that a separate bicycle lane that's, that has, uh, space between the bicycle path and cars. So in other words, there would be a berm and, and some type of median. In order to put that in would cost about a million dollars a mile. Uh, and it was interesting because somebody brought up the fact that if it was a million dollars a mile to put that in, uh, what would the same cost for putting in vehicle mileage? So in other words, a road that would handle cars, would it cost the same as the, you know, a mile of bicycle path? With the idea that if we're really trying to inspire people to ride bicycles, keeping them as safe as we possibly can, maybe the cost would actually be less than we think when we compare it to what we're going to have to pay to increase the amount of roadway for, for cars. So anyway, it was, it was very interesting, but I, I'm doing a lousy job of conveying all the discussion that took place. Uh, it'll take me probably a couple of meetings to really get my feet on the ground with this, but that's my report.
Chair?
Yes.
This is Kathy and this is a comment maybe for Tom and maybe for Jim Winnie. I don't know really whose bailiwick this is, but one of the things I've noticed around town is that the white pavement markers for bicycle lanes, for left and right turns and for a lot of, you know, crosswalks, they, they just haven't been painted. So, you know, it, it must be hard for people riding bikes when their lanes are, you know, the white paint is worn out. I think one of the cheapest, and we're not talking a million dollars, one of the cheapest and most efficient things that could be done is to just paint those darn markers.
I, just to add to that, I can report that they are being painted as we, uh, I think the first evening's worth of work was last night, uh, because when I came into City Hall this morning, there, there's fresh paint on the crosswalks here around the Colburn Park, uh, and up in the Centerra area. I, I think it is a couple of days or several days worth of work. So I would expect them to get to West Lebanon and, and other parts of the community, uh, in the coming days, weather permitting.
When they get to West Lebanon in the corner of Seminary Hill and, uh, South Main Street, please tell them to do it correctly this year because they did it incorrectly last year.
Seminary Hill and?
On the left.
So, Seminary Hill and what?
South Main Street. To go up the, to go up the hill on Seminary Hill, you should be in the center lane, not the right turn lane.
Correct.
But they painted it wrong last year, so it created a lot of problems.
I'll make a note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, um, I think that is it for, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I have two quick ones for the, the Planning Department. One is the, one is the notion of, um, in-person meetings. I've had a conversation with the city manager, uh, manager's office and his expectation is that we will continue to meet remotely, um, into the fall, uh, possibly as late, you know, into November when we move back to, uh, 51 North Park Street, City Hall and the Opera House there. I have reached out to the school district as well to find out because, you know, to find out if their facilities will be available for public meetings at any point. And at this point, they, um, the superintendent wrote right back to say that at this point, they do not plan to open up their facilities. They're trying to, um, balance and, and deploy their custodial staff as best they can, uh, for, for district needs. So with the Opera House physically under construction and the school district facility is not available, um, we're continuing to look for potential venues to have meetings and, and public meetings at which we could achieve social, social distancing, uh, requirements, but there aren't that many. So just suffice it to say, we continue to look for those possibilities. The other update I wanted to mention was that I'd also had a conversation with the city manager's office about the housing question. Um, there's been comments from the planning board in, in recent months about wanting to have a joint meeting with the city council to discuss housing and housing issues and things. The, this, it was the city manager's position, I guess, that, that it would make sense to wait for some other key information to come out. Uh, the census is underway. Uh, that census data will begin to come out by the end of the year, uh, and will continue to come out in, in more and more information, um, as we move forward. At the same time, the Regional Planning Commission is, uh, our local regional planning commission is working with two commissions on the Vermont side to update the housing needs analysis, uh, for our area, which was last done in 2012. The goal in working with the Vermont, uh, commissions is to get a true Upper Valley picture, not just half, um, with respect to the New Hampshire side. So that project is also underway. It's been underway for close to a year now. Uh, and my understanding is that results from that will begin to, uh, be made available in October, late October, early November. So in speaking with the city manager's office, the idea of trying to have a joint discussion about housing, um, we talked about waiting until some of that most, um, most recent data is available, perhaps in the November timeframe. So I just wanted to update the board there as well.
Thank you for that, David. All right, moving along to other business. Tim, I believe that you wanted to talk about, uh, site plans.
Yes, uh, obviously just very quickly, given that we've, we're running out of time. We, staff wanted to run by the full planning board, uh, an idea that we shared with the, um, Development Regulation Subcommittee a week or two ago. What the, the proposal would require some, um, quite a bit of, of, of research and, and work to pull it together, uh, which we think is, is definitely worthwhile, but we didn't want to do that without getting some, getting some feedback from the full board. And so I wanted to, uh, we wanted to give you a, a quick, uh, overview of what we're thinking about and then, um, to, to ask you to consider this over the next couple of weeks for a, a little bit more discussion at, at the, at the next meeting or, or our earliest opportunity. Um, and so let me, uh, share my screen. The, um, what, what, the, the development, um, the Development Regulation Subcommittee is looking at a variety of things, uh, with respect to our, our site plan and subdivision regulations and, uh, working closely with, uh, Rebecca Owens and, and David on, on those items. One aspect that I've been, um, helping with is to look at the thresholds for what requires site plan review before the planning board. Uh, the, the, the cat, the, the, those thresholds are currently set forth in section 3.1 of the site plan regulations. And the idea is that if you qualify for one of those things, then you must come before the, you must come before the planning board for site plan review, uh, and you are subject to the same exact process, uh, that any other project that meets those thresholds, uh, is subject to. So, um, so for example, an easy example would be, um, if you're converting, uh, if you're converting an existing one or two family dwelling to a three-family dwelling, that's considered, the three-family dwelling is considered a multifamily use and that conversion requires site plan review, even if you're not, uh, even if you're not making any exterior changes, uh, to the property, it still requires site plan review. Uh, and at the same time, that, that, you know, this, this example that I'm using of a two-family, two-three-family dwelling, uh, is, is subject to all of the same submission and design requirements that, uh, the construction of a, a brand-new, you know, 200-plus unit, new construction, new family development would be subject to. And so there's, that, there's certainly a disconnect there and it causes, uh, causes some problems. It, it, it creates a, a very, an unnecessarily confusing and complex application process for the applicant. Uh, it, it's, um, it results in a large number of waiver requests for, for these small-scale projects. And, uh, and, and it requires the formality of a public hearing before the planning board that, um, I'm gonna, I'll have to update this slide in the future, but, but just for, for lack of a better word, wastes, um, could potentially arguably waste the, the planning board's time and the applicant's time, uh, reviewing something that, that, um, is really more of a, a check-the-box application. Uh, and again, that, that takes up precious time from the planning board, uh, when it can be reviewing, uh, spending its time on other larger projects and other, uh, bigger, bigger ticket items. Um, at the same time, those, those three-point, section 3.1 thresholds actually exclude quite a bit. Um, and, and, um, and we think that this is, there's an opportunity here to actually capture more projects, uh, that, than, that are currently captured by the site plan review regulations. If, if we, if we, if we, if we do what we're proposing, which is, um, which is, which mirrors what a lot of communities in New Hampshire do, and that is to, uh, create two different categories of site planner, site plans. And one would be, one would be a minor site plan and the other would be a major site plan. And the, um, the minor site plans would be subject to more- And the minor site plans would be subject to more streamlined submission requirements and not as many of the design requirements. At the same time, what arguably where the real benefit comes in is through the use of a technical review committee to review minor site plans, to review and approve those site plans. And that is something that is authorized by state statute. If we had more time, we could take a closer look at what that statute provides. But this idea of having a minor site plan category and process that's reviewed by a technical review committee instead of the full formal Planning Board process is something that's utilized by many communities, including our neighbor to the north. The, again, in creating this minor site plan category, the idea would be have targeted streamlined requirements for small-scale projects instead of making them subject to all of the submission requirements, all the design requirements that are equally applicable to larger projects. The technical review committee would be staffed per statute by staff. It would be, it's organized by the Planning Board, and so the Planning Board would be designating who sits on the technical review committee, but there are limitations. It has to be staffed from certain departments. And some of the features of the technical review committee would be that all decisions made by the TRC would be appealable to the Planning Board. We maintain, we do provide notice to abutters of these technical review committee meetings that would be held in the afternoon before staff instead of, instead of before the full Planning Board. And at the same time, we want to make sure that there are, there are projects that really should be reviewed by the Planning Board regardless of whether or not they fall, regardless of the fact that they may fall into the minor site plan review category, that there's a mechanism to automatically bump those applications, if you will, up to the full Planning Board. And so an easy example would be something where if you qualify for a minor site plan, but you're still asked, but the applicant is still requesting a waiver for any of the requirements, then that automatically goes to the Planning Board. This is just for applicant, applications that meet all the requirements, are minor, and can be easily and efficiently reviewed by staff. So again, this saves time for the Planning Board. It makes it a far more understandable and efficient process from, from an applicant's perspective, and it doesn't take up the Planning Board's time in terms of looking at projects. You don't, you know, there's really not much for the Planning Board to add, and at the same time, you're spending time on waivers and everything else. So that's the quick overview. That's the idea. Create a minor site plan category, which seemed to have, there seemed to be consensus within the Subcommittee that that was a good idea. And then also create a technical review committee where the board is essentially delegating its authority to review minor site plans to a staff, staffed technical review committee. There was a little bit, there were some more questions and the uncertainty, I think, about that component of it. And so we want to just give you an initial overview, food for thought. We're definitely going to come back to you and discuss this more. Please don't hesitate to give me, to ask me questions in the meantime. And just one more, one more point about, just wanted to alert the boards to the fact that our August, the board's August 24th work session will be devoted to a presentation by Steve Buckley and the attorneys from the Hefner Municipal Association, giving a Planning Board Basics workshop. And so this is, this is training that is needed by everyone, both new Planning Boards, seasoned Planning Board members and staff. We can all, we can all benefit from this training. This will be for the Planning Board specifically. It will be online, but it will be the Lebanon Planning Board's training. And so if there are specific questions that have been bugging you or that you'd like to ask the attorneys, let us know in advance, email those to us if you can, and that way we can send forward those to NHMA attorneys in advance to get them thinking about it. Anyway, I just wanted to give you a heads up about that. Sorry for going long.
All right, we are now officially out of time. I have a motion to adjourn, please. Kathy?
That was Laurel.
Laurel, have a second?
Tom seconds.
Tom, any discussion?
I had, I had one quick question for Tim about his, what he just said about the.
Sorry, we're literally out of time, Joan. So, all right. After the meeting. So I'm going to do this alphabetically. I'm in favor to adjourn. Gregorio?
Gregorio's in favor.
Jim?
Council Winnie is in favor.
Joan?
Monroe is in favor.
Laurel?
Laurel's in favor.
Kathy?
Kathy's in favor.
Matt votes aye.
And Tom?
Tom says yes.
All right, we're adjourned and we'll see you shortly.
Okay, everyone, please, I'm going to turn off the recording and ask everybody to log out of this meeting, and we will reconvene in the other meeting.
Can you explain to us exactly how we're doing that?
The invitation that was sent to you was exclusively sent to the Planning Board and no one else.
Do you know the date it was sent? There's so many of them.